Yes, we're.
It's got a pixel out. We're gonna have to replace it.
Okay. I was just wondering, is my eyes or?
What, what green color?
I thought it was sustainability.
Green.
Coming loose with.
The weirdest thing about.
Your new site looks as if it's pretty.
Maybe put your up close. You probably are having trouble.
Yeah.
I can't say words.
How could that be? Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us on this chilly fall evening. Would you please stand if you're able to join us in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Yon?
Lord, bless us as we come together to do the city's business and make us truly thankful for all the good that has happened in this city and the things we have planned for it. And as we come together with our families next week, please be with those that are alone or in need. And please shine your blessings upon all. In God's name, amen.
I'd like to call on November twenty first, twenty twenty four meeting to order. We'll begin with consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second?
Motion to approve in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We do have a guest presentation this evening, and it's a presentation from Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Board. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jared Toich. I am the Chair of the Environmental and Sustainability Board, City of Canton. We've been in existence, I think, since about twenty nineteen. We were just talking about that, remembering where we actually met before we went to Zoom, like everybody else. And then we were back together again. I'll be pretty brief tonight. I really just wanted to come in, we wanted to come in, and update you all on what we've been working on, what we've accomplished, and what we're kind of looking ahead to do within the next year or so. And so you should have, I think, the slides. That's our mission statement. I'm certainly not gonna read that, and I think we need to probably tweak it a little bit. But you get the gist of, of what we're about and what we're here to do. Mostly, obviously, we're here to support the council and what you all need and, and, but certainly, one of our big accomplishments, I feel like, over the last couple of years is updating the plant palette. And we were able to pull about twenty invasive species off that list that was stuff we don't want in the city. We don't think that it should count towards any kind of development credit. And so that, that's certainly a big win, we think, for the city from a sustainability standpoint, focusing in on native plants, certainly working in Heritage Park and, and City Hall and some of the native plant gardens that are here. The balloon release ordinance really, we didn't need to do much of anything there. There's already a litter ordinance for the city. So that's, like all things that go up, they must come down. And so that's what, really, that focuses on. It focuses on the litter ordinance that's already in place. I'm just highlighting, a balloon release will trigger the litter ordinance. And of course, we do several events throughout the year, including, I want to highlight certainly Arbor Day, which I believe the city's been a part of Arbor Day now, a tree city for about thirty-two years. So that's an exciting opportunity that we continue to do out here, give out trees, native trees, to people that want to receive them, usually seedlings every year. Obviously, we do an Earth Day event and do other aspects throughout the year, small events to encourage people, highlighting the importance of recycling, highlighting the importance of native plants, water sustainability, solar, which we can touch on, including the EV. So some of the things we're working on right now is the EV charging. You know, this Canton is a place for people to come and having EG EV charging. If anybody has an electric vehicle, there's a lot of apps associated with that. You can find electric charging stations. For a while, Canton had none, and Jasper had one. And so we really pushed to, to bring those here to Canton because if people are driving through, we wanted people to see that Canton was a place to stop, have dinner, come and visit the shops that are in the downtown, enjoy the city. And so we're moving in that direction. It's great to see that we've got some charging stations right here. And I think we can continue to work to, to do more, to encourage more people to come and visit the city and park. So the tree ordinance is probably the big one that we'll work on this year. That's an opportunity. I think it, it hasn't probably been tweaked or modified, I think, in almost twenty years. So there's an opportunity to revisit it, look at the language, understand what other cities are doing and, and see what could be best practices for the City of Canton, recognizing the work that we have in our master plan and other opportunities we wanna, we want to accomplish. And then, of course, you know, continue to do the things that we've been doing, educate the community, focus on some water conservation. Arbor Day that I mentioned is a big one for the city. Continue to focus on that. And Garden in the Park, which is an opportunity to give away native plants, which we've done the last couple of years, which has been highly successful, and continue to do that. That's it. I'm happy to take any questions or pause there. I will say that we couldn't do what we could do without Kelly Penley and wanna just highlight to you all what, what great service she provides for the city and certainly what she provides for, for us as a board.
Great. Thank you, Jared. We, we agree with you on your praise of Ms. Penley's and appreciate her work and the entire work of the Sustainability Board in advancing our roadmap for success. We appreciate your work. And any questions for, for Jared at this point?
I do.
Yeah. Mr. Waterman?
Mr. Toich, how is the, I guess, the project with Schneider going? Has there, there been any recent developments? You know, updates on the timeline, you know, things that they're working on, any new initiatives?
That's a great reminder. You know, Schneider did help us with the sustainability plan, and they were a good partner. They did come in and work with us on that. I think that, I'd have to defer probably to Kelly in terms of where we're at with Schneider in that process, but happy to continue to work with them. I think that they were a resource.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you for your report. Appreciate it. Thank you. Do you have in your packet the draft minutes from our council meeting on November seventh? Are there any changes, revisions, or motions on those minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the draft minutes for November seventh, twenty twenty four.
Second? Have a motion and a second, or any further discussion? Not? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. I don't believe we have any informational items this evening. Announcements? Ms. McGrew, I believe you had one?
Thank you. I wanted to let council know that the ordinance review committee has been meeting. We've met several times, and we have made some improvements and some changes to the ordinance. We met this evening before council meeting, made a couple of more changes and additions. On, at the next meeting, December fifth, we'll have an ordinance ready for you to discuss. And of course, that'll be sent out ahead of time so that you can read it in preparation. That's all. Look forward to presenting that ordinance and discussing it December fifth.
Thank you, Ms. McGrew. We look forward to that and appreciate the work of the, the committee and Mr. Dyer and, and staff that's been involved in that. So we look forward to considering that update. Any other announcements this evening? Mr. Yon?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to mention that Councilman Waterman and I hosted a Ward Three Town Hall meeting last Tuesday night at Oakdale Baptist Church. And it was, the weather kept, I think, a lot of people away, but it was still a very good event. We had a lot of very involved citizens and a very good lively discussion. And I want to do a special thanks to Mr. Peppers and all the members of staff that came and helped and worked to that event. And I think it was a very good event, and I hope we can do more of that sort of thing in the future.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Yon. We appreciate your work and hosting that town hall for your ward and, and other citizens who attended and appreciate the work of staff. So, okay. Any other thing else? Okay. At this point, we'll move into our ten-minute public input. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, state your name and address, and deliver your comments. Ms. Ursula Cox?
I'm Ursula Cox. Excuse me. I did not fall off a horse.
Could you pull the microphone a little bit closer to you and, and state your address as well?
Okay. Five sixty-three McCollum Road, Canton, Georgia, and not in the city, not in the growth boundary. As you know, Bill knows personally, Brian knows personally, Ferris knows personally. This is an area of the county that supports the city, but we're not in a growth boundary. We're not, we're, we are not in the city, and we support you. We're famous for staying out of the city. I know you know that. And we got, really, Bill on his way to public service. First time I met him, he was trying to write an injustice in the city. And I said, you'll be mayor of Canton one day. Oh, no, not me. What are you now?
Sure fault.
I'm representing property owners on McCollum Road in Young Harris Lane. And a request was made six months ago that would change our lives, and we didn't know about it. I know you've received all the emails and you're familiar with it, and I gave a frantic phone call to Bill this afternoon. We met with the Teeples, the people who requested it six months ago. Today, it's, today's her birthday. The son's, he, we met and the landowners, and they want to reassess. Now, I know they have to tell you this. Okay, they have to personally, but they gave me permission. They knew I was coming here to speak, and they want to reassess their options about the water line. I just want you, I want to make sure, clear that we know the law and that these people made a request six months ago. They want to reassess it. I'm just mentioning that to you, and that means they'd like the, like we wanted, the construction delayed till things there, till some more information was given to them and us. And right now, the pipes are just being laid down. The only digging that ever has happened is, is up at Brick Mill and McCollum, another fire hydrant. We do have good fire service, and we have consulted, and some of our questions were answered by the tax assessor, by the fire chief, and other engineers. And the reason why these people requested it was because they thought wells were too expensive. But they also have a concern about the expense of this. But this come, there's an affidavit that's been presented that they won't get easements to get the pipes to them. The pipes, the demand is gonna be so small that the pipes will have to be flushed. And where is it going? It's going to the right-of-way of Young Harris. And it has bad drainage anyway. It will go right on to the Youngs' property there, here, their property owners there. And it will go on to the Lombara property. And another thing is that the taxes will go up. It's seen as a boon to the market if there's a water line there. And so the property owners were caught cold about this. We talked to them. They want to reassess things. The other is, these pipes are being headed also down McCollum Road to you-know-where. And I don't want any water service down there. So I'm respectfully saying, if you could, I know you have to hear from the Teeples, and you all did receive the emails from the property owners, haven't you? I'm sure. Okay. So, you know, there is, you know, with this affidavit, with them wanting to reassess it, this is something I was just gonna come here tonight on, you know, saying, on behalf of the property owners, because this is an area that has wanted to retain its rural places, its natural preserve. We've benefited the city. Everybody wants to live there. I mean, Brian can vote, vote. This, they're gonna have three houses. This might be, this is really something on their seven-point-five-nine acre lot. But they want to blend in, they want to be there, and they would like this. So they will get in touch with you about this personally, and I appreciate this opportunity to talk to you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Cox.
All right. Thank you.
Danielle Kitchen?
Hi, council. I'm Danielle Kitchen. I live at two seventy Jeanette Street. Some of you are my neighbors. Um, so I just wanted to make it brief tonight. I continue to stand by my previous statement that I think the city is putting the horse before the cart. No, the cart before the horse, sorry, regarding my expansion of the historic district. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the HPC meeting on November twelfth, but I watched the meeting online. And towards the end of the meeting, one commissioner explicitly stated, quote, "We're just going to have to figure this out as we go along and try to be accommodating." So my question is, at whose expense are we gonna try to figure this out as we go along? So earlier in this year, during an informal town hall with the property owners who were affected by the proposed expansion, we assured them that the guidelines would only apply to street-facing sides of their properties. Since then, the messaging has changed, leading to significant confusion. If I'm understanding correctly, it now appears that the entire exterior of a property would be regulated, not just the street-facing side. To make matters worse, as recently as last week, the HPC was still revising residential guideline approval matrix. While historic guidelines are intended to preserve character, they can also unintentionally devalue property investments by prioritizing preservation over adaptability. Restriction's limit modernization, they reduce market appeal, and they increase maintenance costs. A lot of those costs our own neighbors can't afford. Before supporting or complying with guidelines and the expansion, I urge everyone to carefully consider how they will impact the long-term value and flexibility of property owners and stakeholders. These guidelines and this expansion still feels really half-baked to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen. Mr. Nate Rich? Okay. Doesn't seem to be present, so we will move on. We'll move into our consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. As per usual, I will read each, each of these items. We've all discussed this. We appear to have consensus. However, if there's any of these items that anyone would like removed for further discussion, we will do so. Item A, approval of annual update to capital improvements plan and five-year short-term work plan for impact fees. Item B, approval of personal property auction contract with Jeff Dobson and Associates and disposition of certain firearm items via auction. And item C, approval of the twenty twenty-five council meeting calendar. Would anyone like for these, any of these items to be removed? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Moving into old business, we have item A, discussion and possible action on proposed historic district expansion. Ms. Anderson?
Good evening. On October third, twenty twenty four, a public hearing on the proposed expansion of the historic district was held to allow the public to provide comment. Based on the feedback received and the guidance regarding reviewing and enforcing project items that are either visible or not visible from the street, the Historic Preservation Commission discussed and revised the approval matrix of the draft residential guidelines to make it more user-friendly. The revised draft is on the community development webpage for anyone to review. The next step in this process is to seek action of the proposed expansion of the historic district. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I'd like to just make a brief statement here that it wasn't long ago that residents kind of came to me to help organize and fight the city on our efforts to keep our neighborhood and homes residential and protect its historic character. At that time, we formed the Historic Canton Homeowners Association, and after a year of hard work and legal costs, we, we won the battle. And as Ms. Cox referred to earlier, it's one of the reasons I'm sitting here tonight, probably the primary reason. But since that time, many residents have continued to restore and improve the historic architecture of the homes along to protect and undeniably, the undeniably most beautiful gateway into Canton. Canton prides itself on our preservation efforts, and our residents value the small town and historic character of our community as demonstrated in the citizen survey that was conducted recently. Expanding the historic district advances our roadmap tenets of creating great neighborhoods and preserving historic downtown Canton. Current and recent new residential products by outside corporate developers in Roosterville and on Tannier Street is a few examples clearly indicate what can transpire without practical and simple oversight. The neighborhood is a nationally recognized and registered historic district. Our Historical Society supports expansion and the preservation of the district. And my question is, do we really value it equally on the local level? Once lost, our historic district cannot be replaced. I'm extremely proud, when people ask, to state that I live in Canton's historic district, and I applaud our citizen volunteers on the Historic Preservation Commission and our staff for their hard work and efforts to preserve unique character and charm of our neighborhood and subsequently, the City of Canton. I also applaud the citizens who've given their input on both sides of this issue. I know it's complicated and sometimes confusing. I do want to clarify that our considered action items tonight is only a, a simple question of whether or not to, to expand the historic district and the guidelines. It's not, we're not voting on guidelines. The guidelines will be set and established by the Historic Preservation Commission, which is, consists of our citizens and citizen volunteers, and we value their service and, and work on this effort. And that's basically up, I've stated my opinion many, many times, but I appreciate the effort and I appreciate the input from everyone and the information that's been brought to us and discussed, I think, many and many forms. And again, that feedback is always valuable and, and worth considering. So.
We have other comments, questions? Discussion?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Tolan?
Other, are there no questions? Ms. Anderson, question as it relates to what you just said at your opening, as it relates to the viewing of the property in question that might have work that needs to be done on it. What was the rationale behind? Well, first, can you, can you talk a little bit about how we moved from street view to other view, if you will, and kind of the rationale behind why that decision was made? My understanding, if I may preface that, is that if a permit is being considered for work done on a property that might be in the rear of the property, there are rights to go onto that property and, and take a four, a four or five, however many sides that house has, view of the home. But can you put some perspective on that for me, please?
So when you are reviewing the certificate of appropriateness, it is treated similar to a building permit where we would review all four sides. Some of the confusion was around enforcement. Code enforcement and staff are not allowed on the property unless they have permission. So a lot of times, from the enforcement standpoint, it is what we can see from the street. But again, the COA is treated similar to the building permit where we review all four sides. Or in the case, if they're not building a new construction, it would be any elevation where changes are happening.
Makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I understand the, the, the comments that folks have made relative to the HPC guidelines being an HOA. I mean, I completely get that. I understand where people are coming from. Nobody wants to be quote-unquote controlled. The HPC has gone back and forth, tweaking the guidelines based on public feedback. I appreciate their thoughtful guidance, and, and we've, we've waded through the, the issues basically for the last quite a few months. The bottom line for me is that we cannot at, excuse me, we cannot sit idle while either developers or individuals come in and build monstrosities of homes in some cases, especially in our historic neighborhoods, without regard to preserving character. Expansion of the district is only, is the only choice we have based on state law and to preserve the character of our historic neighborhoods. Let me give you some examples. The mayor touched on a couple. In Roosterville, there's a large home currently under construction that is totally out of character with the neighborhood, and currently, there is nothing the city can do about these types of decisions. Tannier Street, as the mayor mentioned, there are two structures under construction right now that are totally out of character for the area. Outside the district, there happens to be three, I'll call them mega homes, that, that you could probably find similar homes on the cliffs of Malibu, California, that there are just simply no, no ways, no methods that the city can, can use to control that. So we have to put some measures in place to protect the character of our historic neighborhoods, in my view. There will be challenges, but we have a thoughtful and reasonable HPC. And ultimately, if things don't go as planned, either the HPC can fix it or the city council can step in. I doubt that's gonna be necessary, by the way. Oh, and I, I did the math based on comments that I've received. Sixty-two-point-five percent of the people that reached out to me verbally or via email were in favor of the expansion. So that's my test of reasonableness, despite some, some trepidation that I had relative to, to the decision. So, Mr. Mayor, if there are no other comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve the expansion of the historic district.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I did, Mr. Tolan kind of touched on it, but Mr. Peppers, could you just clarify the process? It's my understanding, once guidelines are established, someone, again, my understanding also, and please correct me if I'm wrong on this, so that, that staff could certainly make decisions without going to HPC. And in the fact, in the case, a, a decision or a case went before the HPC, the applicant did not agree with the findings there. They would have the right to build a council to overrule that decision. Is that correct?
So the way the matrix is drawn up, there are certain things that can be administratively reviewed by staff. That would be the very simplest things that could be done under the, under the guidelines. Ultimately, if the applicant disagreed with staff on one of those administrative items or disagreed with the recommendation on the certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission, they could appeal to the city council, similar to our process with our Board of Appeals. If someone is applying for a variance... If someone is applying for a variance or, or what have you that's going before the Board of Appeals and they disagree with the decision of that body, they can appeal that to the council. And then council can choose to hear that appeal.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Can I?
Yep, Mr. Roach?
I want to reiterate one more time, my hat's off to the HPC and staff. This has been a tough one. And, you know, we've talked to a lot of people about it. So, I just, I want to thank y'all again for all y'all've done. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. McGree?
Ms. Anderson, does this affect all four sides of the home?
Yes.
Okay. I was under the impression from talking with someone that only the front facade would be affected.
If it's a new construction, it would be all four sides. If it is changes to the exterior, it would be the elevations where the exterior or where the changes are happening.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion to expand the HPC, the historic district, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
So, I record five yays and one nays. Is that correct? Okay. And motion passes. Carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Moving forward, item, item B, that is discussion and possible action on case CUP 202407-011, request to convert existing structure into a three-unit living facility at 570 East Main Street. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the mayor has stated, this is an existing home located at 570 East Main Street. Its original construction was as a residence. Over the years, it has become used primarily as an office on the upper floor and two rental apartments on the bottom. The, the new, the new owner has intentions of living in the top floor, so hence, three living units, as you know, we constitute that as a multiple family dwelling. And she has made application to get a conditional use permit approved so it can be used as such. During the public hearing that was held at the last meeting, no one came forward in opposition or in support of. I did have, as I mentioned earlier, one person come by the office, and he was in total support of this. And tonight is the action meeting to see if you will approve it or not. If you do approve it, I will craft a resolution for your signatures in the next couple of days.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. We have discussed this matter. It's gone through the process. Are any questions or further discussion? Done? Are there any motions? Yes, Mr. Roach?
I would like to make a motion to approve the request to convert existing structure into a three-unit living facility at 570 East Main Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion. We'd like to welcome our new citizen to the city of Canton. Item C, discussion and possible action on deeding the downtown fire station property to the Downtown Development Authority and a proposed international, intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement with the DDA for the redevelopment of the downtown fire station property. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. All this discussion on historic preservation, and I get to bring to you tonight the discussion and possible action to renovate the downtown fire station. It's been sitting vacant and disrepair for a number of years. The county has approached us, and I brought this before y'all a couple of weeks ago. The county has approached us amenable to renovate that building in cooperation with the city and the DDA and to house the fire services for the downtown area. I mentioned a couple of weeks ago that to do this, it would probably be in the best order to have the DDA manage that process. I provided a copy, it's a draft copy of an intergovernmental agreement that will be executed between the county and the DDA that will allow both parties, the DDA and the county, and obviously, the DDA working under the authority of the cities, to work together to renovate that and use impact fees, fire impact fees, to do that. The county has accumulated approximately about $2 million of impact fees thus far that will help get that project off the ground. And what we'll use is approximately $3 million in future impact fees to finish covering the cost of that project, which is estimated right now at about $5 million. So, to allow the DDA to do that, you also have in your packets a draft agreement that the fire has prepared for us between the city and the DDA that will basically, as well as a, a deed to transfer ownership of that property to the DDA. And that is set up in a manner where we can take those fire impact fees and have them transferred to the city, and then the city pay the DDA to deface that debt that's for that construction and those improvements on the fire station. So, you have it in front of you tonight. DDA meets next week, Monday, to address this and to consider this as well. So, we are going to ask action from the council, but I'll entertain any questions you have or if we need to discuss this further, we can certainly entertain it at a later time as well. So, appreciate any consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. We've discussed this several occasions. I believe everyone kind of agrees it's a win-win for everyone and preserving the, the existing fire station, that building downtown, retaining ownership by the DDA. But we appreciate the partnership with the Cherokee County Fire Emergency Management Services and their continued investment of downtown to, to enhance fire protection for our citizens and businesses downtown. But any questions, comments, discussion? Any questions from Mr. Ingram?
Mr. Mayor, if there are no questions, I would make a motion that we approve deeding the downtown fire station property to the DDA and approve the proposed intergovernmental agreement with the DDA for the redevelopment of the downtown fire station property.
A motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item D, discussion and possible action to provide additional funding for Canton's Main Street program and Canton Sanitation Fund. Mr. Ingram?
Mayor and council, the reason that's coming for you, coming before you tonight is we have additional funds. One, we have additional funds in the hotel motel tax fund that need to be expended in fiscal year '24, last year. We're in a 60-day window during October and November that we can make some of these adjusting entries into our books for last year. So, we'd like to get approval to go ahead and transfer 50, additional, additional $50,000 of hotel motel tax funds to the Main Street program. And then also, transfer $150,000 from the general fund to our sanitation fund to cover expenses. Now, recall, we do that literally every year. But we're, we're wanting formal approval. You will get a budget amendment, the formal budget amendment, probably in February toward the end of the year before we present the audit. But we're just bringing this forth tonight so that we can get formal approval to transfer those funds if, if it's amenable to council.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Any questions for Mr. Ingram or comments? Ms. McGree?
Thank you. If there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion to provide the additional funding to Main Street program and the sanitation fund in the amount of $50,000 to Main Street and $150,000 to the sanitation fund.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
We have several items of new business to attend to tonight. The first two items are staff reports on upcoming cases are for information only, no discussion. Item A, staff report for information only, cases ANNX 2407-001, RZ0N 2407-004, MP 2407-003, and CUP 2407-002, request to annex, rezone, gain a conditional use permit, and master plan approval along Prominence Point Parkway for residential development. Mr. Green?
Again, good evening, Mayor, members of council. As you stated, this is the preliminary staff report. We're waiting on comments from other departments within the city and from the county. The Board of Education, waiting to hear back from them for any mitigation fees they may request or recommend. If you may recall, this property come before the city in 2022 for annexation for a completely townhome development. The annexation request was denied, so obviously, the rest of the applications did not go forward. What they are asking for in this application is a majority of single-family detached homes with 12 townhomes. The more formalized in the staff report will be coming for the public hearing, which will be held on December the 5th.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. And the non-B, again, a staff report from Mr. Green, information only. Cases ANNX 2409-001, RZ0N 2409-002, and MP 2409-003, request to annex, rezone, and gain master plan approval for 57.16 acres located on Knox Bridge Highway for residential development. Mr. Green?
Again, this is our request to annex the 57.16 acres along Knox Bridge Highway. This property is located along both the north and the south side of Knox Bridge Highway. The applica, the applicant is requesting a single-family detached neighborhood with the zoning of PDR Plan Development Residential. Again, waiting on comments from other departments to formalize and finalize of the staff report, most notably, waiting on comments back from the school board. This item will also be on the December 5th agenda as a public hearing. I'll also mention, previously, an application was submitted for April and Lucky Streets for a 198-unit condominium development. The applicant requested that their application be postponed, and their public hearing will also be held on December the 5th. You'll have at least three public hearings for zoning matters in December.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Christmas will come early in December, I guess. Thank you. Item C, discussion and possible action on information exchange agreement with Cherokee County Development Department. Ms. Fitz, it's always a pleasure to see you. Welcome.
It's an information agreement with Cherokee County Development. It's a, where we do their fingerprinting for the alcohol license. GCIC requires us to have an agreement between the two.
Okay. Any questions? And then there's, are there any fees or costs associated with that? It's just?
They pay us to do the fingerprinting, but that's it.
Okay. Great. It's good when people pay us, right? Any questions for Ms. Fitz?
If there are no questions, I would like to make a motion to approve the information exchange agreement with Cherokee County Development Department.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion. Thank you. Item D, discussion of local administered project LAP recertification application and request for mayor to sign application. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. So, GDOT has developed a local administered project certification process, which basically allows municipalities to manage, maintain the projects on GDOT highways and for federally funded projects. The city is already LAP certified. This is just a recertification process that has to, the city has to do every three years. And I just, requesting that the mayor sign the application. There, there are no changes. It's just basically the same thing we submitted last time.
Okay. And you'll be bringing that to the next meeting or?
Yeah, that's fine.
Any questions for Ms. Watson? Item E, discussion of traffic signal proposal from North Cherokee Electrical, Inc. in the amount of $59,375.
Thank you.
Ms. Watson?
So, since we have installed the signal at Hickory Log Creek, Hickory, Hickory Log Drive and Reservoir Drive, we've been having issues with the radar system. Some of it is the fact that staff doesn't have the capabilities to maintain it. So, we're having to call GDOT to reset the program for us, and part of it's because we don't know why. All of a sudden, it shows that there's a car there in the middle of the night when there's not a car there, and it sets off, some crazy things happen and the timing gets off. And then it takes a couple of weeks to get it back into the right, to where it's working correctly. So, we have loops everywhere else in the city, and so, staff has went and asked North Georgia, I mean, North Cherokee Electric for a price to change that signal to loops. And so, this is, would be to change that signal to a loop system.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Watson?
Well, I'm curious, lack of understanding, I guess. What's the difference between what we have and a loop system?
So, loops are, are in the ground. They're the ones that you typically, when you drive up to a, a red light, you may see that there's like lines in the ground. The cars are detected by those loops that are in the ground. On a radar system, it's kind of like a camera.
Got it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Okay. Mr. Johnson?
So, I guess, just curious again about this loop. Is it a lesson learned type of situation? Will we not use those again, I'm sorry, not the loop, but the radar again for a future project?
Yeah, so, we've already, on the Reservoir Drive at Reinhardt College Parkway, we're putting a signal in. We had originally designed it for radar. We have already changed that, and the contractor will be putting in loops. And then the new signal at Prominence, as well as Northside Cherokee, the new signal at the hospital will all be loops.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
I think since that signal's been struck by lightning three times, I hear, maybe someone in the universe tries to send a sign that there's a better system out there as well.
Well, it's, it's just one of those situations where the radar is the newer technology. We just aren't seeing the benefit, because when that light goes down at the school, we have to send the police department out there to manually handle that intersection, and we're kind of at the mercy of the, the contractors that we can find that can do work on that system. So, it might be two weeks, it could be a month, and it's just not, it's not worth it.
Yeah. Agree. I agree. Okay. So, Ms. Watson, while we have you, we'll go on to item F, discussion of Amendment Five of the Professional Engineering Services Agreement, H2O Innovation Operations and Maintenance LLC.
Thank you. So, this contract amendment will include the CPI increase of 2.9%. It also will include additional wastewater plant personnel and an additional utility line locator. We had originally planned to stage it out with the wastewater plant operators as we continued on with the plant. Unfortunately, once phase one came on, we, we realized that more staff was needed. They did immediately hire one operator to help with some of the overtime and the additional work that the guys were having to do. But this would allow two additional and then beyond what they've already hired and a utility line locator. They actually already staff two utility line locators, but we only are contracted for one. So, this contract amendment would just cover all of those items.
And this would include staffing the new wastewater treatment plant around the clock, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Watson? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item G, discussion of an updated municipal services agreement with Cherokee County for the administration of animal control services. Mr. Peppers?
Good evening. The city contracts with Cherokee County Marshal's Office to enforce the-
Uh, the city contracts with Cherokee County Marshal's Office to enforce the animal control ordinance on behalf of the city. Uh, part of that ordinance provides that when there are situations that occur which result in, uh, uh, certain actions based upon ordinance violations, that the county magistrate is involved in the hearing process. Uh, in speaking with the county manager, uh, knowing that we will have a new magistrate judge in January. He had asked that we reapprove this agreement, uh, have the Board of Commissioners reapprove this agreement. So that the new magistrate judge can sign it, uh, after he has sworn into office in January. Basically attesting that he's part of the process and agreeing to do the work on behalf of the city.
And there's no change in the agreement, correct?
The only change to the agreement is the term. Uh, and this intergovernmental agreement, like all others that we're doing with the county, is now tied to our service delivery strategy. So the expiration of the agreement now matches the expiration of our service delivery strategy, which is June of two thousand twenty-eight.
It's a good revision, so. And you will bring that to us at the next meeting to prove, so we can have that done by the end of the year?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions? If not, then item H, discussion of updating municipal services agreement with Cherokee County for first appearance hearings?
This is similar in that we're updating the agreement because we have a change in magistrate. Uh, when the city has an ordinance violation that requires an individual to be booked, and it's a bookable offense, into the jail. We are required to provide an expeditious first appearance hearing. Our municipal court judges are part-time judges. And so like the other cities in Cherokee County, we utilize the magistrate's office of the county to provide those first appearance hearings. Uh, so similar, similar to, uh, the last item, council would approve the adjustment to this agreement with the new magistrate's name. Uh, the county will approve that in December and then the new magistrate will sign that in January. Again, like the other agreement, this one, the term of it has been changed to match service delivery strategy, June of two thousand twenty-eight.
Any questions? If not, Mr. Peppers, your report?
Sure, I have a couple of items for you. One thing I want to note, uh, is that we received word, uh, late last week that, uh, four, uh, project funding requests from the city to the Atlanta Regional Commission had been approved by their staff and recommended by their staff for part of their transportation improvement plan. So in, in Georgia, when those federal and state road dollars are allocated by, uh, by the state for projects on transportation. Uh, in the metro area, they go to the Atlanta Regional Commission as the planning agency to basically determine how those will be divvied up and spent. Uh, we received, again, four projects that have been approved, uh, totaling about eight and a half million dollars. Uh, the first is, uh, at State Route one forty and, uh, Reinhardt College Parkway. Recall, that's the, uh, roundabout, uh, project. Uh, we're receiving nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars in, uh, federal funding commitment for right-of-way acquisition. And then there's three funding commitments that is associated with State Route one forty at State Route five up to Mary Lane. And that is for right-of-way acquisition, utility relocations and construction. Uh, and that's somewhere around six point two million. Uh, so that's, that's good news for us. Ms. Watson's done a good job keeping these projects on track and, and making sure that the Atlanta Regional Commission understands the needs. And, uh, so far, every time we've gone back and requested additional funding, the ARC's granted it. So, uh, there's, for the list of projects that they approve, there's a list that's usually twice as long of projects they don't approve. So right now, we're in a good spot, so I really thank Ms. Watson for that. And, uh, we'll make sure that they get through the rest of the ARC board votes. Uh, the only other item I wanted to mention to you tonight, we had a request from the city of Milton. Uh, as it relates to some litigation that they're currently going through. And they're, they had requested that the city of Canton, among other cities in the state of Georgia, participate with them in an amicus brief on a, on a court appeal that they have. So back in twenty sixteen, there was a vehicular accident in Milton where a vehicle left the roadway and it collided with a planter, uh, that was outside of the travel lane but within the right-of-way. Um, and that case, uh, did go to court. And in court, at trial court, the, uh, city was found, city of Milton was found to be partially at fault. And the jury awarded damages against the city of thirty-five million dollars. The Court of Appeals affirmed the findings of the trial court, uh, earlier this year. And so this, uh, this amicus brief, uh, will go before the State Supreme Court. I presented this information to Mr. Dyer and he agreed that we should probably, uh, agree to send a resolution, uh, filing the amicus brief. Basically joining, uh, uh, with our concerns about the precedents that this would set. I don't know if Mr. Dyer wants to speak at all about it.
So that, that, they've requested the Supreme Court hear the case. So this is a, joining in on a request to have the Supreme Court decide the case. So it, uh, it dealt with not a new principle of the law, which is you have to keep your road safe, but, uh, excuse me. But the, dealing with what you can do in the shoulder of the road, this was. Excuse me. And so you have to keep the shoulder clear. That's what it said. So it's not a crazy legal principle, it just had never been applied to this situation before.
And of course, the municipal concerns across the state are that, you know, there's lots of things that occur within the shoulder of a road. What are we actually responsible for? You know? So, uh, so Ms. Fortner prepared a resolution and I'm happy to read it for you if council would like to act on it. We can certainly add it to the agenda. Um, I believe we could also have it on the agenda. Let me go back to that email real quick. I believe that we could also. The brief is on December thirteenth, so we could add it to the agenda for the next meeting. So don't it at that point. The Georgia Municipal Association's also engaged in this and are encouraging municipalities to also take place. If, if that's something that you think you're interested in, we'll make sure that we get it on the agenda for the next, for you to approve. If it's something you're not interested in, just let me know and we won't put it on the next agenda for you to approve.
Sounds like something we should participate in and based on GMA's recommendations and also our own future best interests. But, uh, any, anyone disagree with that? And is it something that you would like acted on tonight, or should we consider it the next agenda?
I think it'll be fine for us to put it on the next agenda. It's, there, the brief is not until the thirteenth, we should be able to get it to them a week ahead of time.
Okay. Sounds good.
I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Oh, oh, I do have a team member of the month. For the month of October, Pam Wetzel is in our police department. And anybody in the city who has had the opportunity to work with Pam knows she's like, she's kind of like everybody's favorite aunt, you know? Um, she's just always got a smile on her face, she's always there to help. Uh, she, uh, when we had a little bit of flooding over at the police department a couple of months ago, she was, she was running around in support services mode. Uh, but she received several nominations from her peers and we did recognize her as our October team member of the month. So I did want to mention that.
Congratulations to Aunt Pam. Any, any questions for Mr. Peppers? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any council introduced items? Didn't have any, let us check. Just a couple of quick things, I just want to remind, um, council members, uh, to prepare any, um, board and commission appointments you may have by the first meeting in December, so we can get those approved and wrapped up, uh, in the month of December. Um, you have that list from Ms. Fortner, the vacancies and, and who's responsible for what. So if you have a, a, um, an appointment on that list, uh, please, please let us know and we'll try to get that wrapped up. Uh, and the only other thing, I just wanted to, um, thank our, our team and staff, uh, who participated in last night's event downtown to kick off the holidays with the tree lighting. It was a wonderful, wonderful, uh, gathering of, of, I can't, probably a couple of thousand people at least. It was, it was a lot of people, a lot of kids, but a lot of very enthusiastic and happy kids. And, uh, it was a great night and appreciated, uh, and, um, again, it just made me thankful to, to live and serve in this, this city. And on that note of, I just wanted to wish everyone, since we won't be meeting again before next week and Thanksgiving, a happy Thanksgiving and with your family and friends and loved ones. And, uh, I'm grateful to serve the city, I'm grateful to our team, our staff, I'm grateful to our residents who take so much pride and joy in our city. And that was on full display last night. And I'm thankful to this council for your hard work and your service and your civility and collaboration. And, uh, I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving, so. With that, I'd be thankful for a motion to adjourn tonight.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We're adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.